Acknowledging the the importance of this vital issue this month, Suicide Prevention Month is September. It's also actually National Recovery Month, which is especially meaningful because oftentimes they go hand in hand so much of this month is about sharing information about knowing the signs, the finding the words to say and reaching out for support. And and we do and we can recover with support, resources, community and resilience. So with that, my name is Frida Kajad. It's an honor to be here today. I use pronouns she/her. And I'm a member of the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Commission. I'm also the Chair of its Youth Committee. And very notably, I am somebody in recovery myself. I celebrated 11 years of abstinence from a very vicious 15-year eating disorder that ranged from everything from anorexia, bulimia, compulsive overeating earlier this month, which also felt very befitting given the National Recovery Month. And and again, thank you for proclaiming September Suicide Prevention Month. I just am curious, by a raise of of hands, I'm gonna look at the in the schoolroom too. I'm just curious to see how many people have been personally impacted or know somebody who has been personally impacted, who couldn't imagine living, who attempted suicide or by who took their own lives. Yeah, and more and more, thank you so much for for sharing that. And more and more, we're experiencing extended, the extended effects of the pandemic on our communities with increased mental health challenges and trauma and burnout fatigue and de-staticative behaviors amongst people of all ages, young people, older people and everyone in between. And so throughout the pandemic and still today, when I talk with my friends, when I talk with family members and colleagues, people through the committee with my committee head on, who have children ranging from five to 15 and beyond, or or colleagues in their 50s upward, they're seeing that their their children, people are feeling pressures from isolation as well as the rapid changes in life. And they they don't want, they're they're struggling with finding the will to live. And as a mother myself, I and somebody in recovery, I absolutely have had moments in my my darkest moments when I was at the bottom of the bottom of the top of my addiction, where I just wanted to be invisible. And so it shows up very differently for people. Older members of society are feeling increased isolation when they need support the most. And so what we know to be true, as I mentioned, is that we can recover with support and hope and resilience. And so the theme for this year is thriving at every age. And there is a website I want to plug, suicideispreventable.org. And in it, you will find very simple language and three clear steps of what to do and how we can prevent suicides because they are absolutely preventable. The first step is know the signs. So pain is not always obvious. When we do pay attention, we can notice changes in behavior. And this ranges from maybe somebody is becoming less engaged or they're giving away their possessions or talking about suicide. Finding the words, Suicide is Preventable also lists what words to say, what not to say importantly, how to hold space, ask questions and also be equipped with specific resources because oftentimes when people are struggling, it is that brief moment in time where we can reach out and transition them into action. I mean, connecting them with vital resources that can that can help them out. And then finally, the third step is reaching out. So know that you are not alone if you're struggling, know that you're not alone if you're reaching out to somebody who you identify as struggling. There is a new crisis hotline that was rolled out just this July, 988, which is specifically for mental health crises. So people no longer are calling 911 and being triaged from law enforcement. This line 988 is specifically personed by mental health and behavioral health professionals. And already in this county, since its launch, we've seen an uptick in those calls in double digits by Star Vista, which is the community partner that's fielding those calls at present. And then also you can text E as in emergency, M M as in Mary, to 741741, which also will connect you with trained professionals. So again, thank you so much. I also encourage you to visit the county website, which has a number of events, both online and virtual additional resources to connect you with community resources and so much more. So again, thank you deeply for proclaiming September Suicide Prevention Month. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you very much. And Jeremy, I imagine we can get the list of resources in our newsletter this week, maybe.
We'll try for this week if we can, or certainly do. Yeah, Fred, I'll reach out to you directly. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions?
Thank you for speaking out and thank you for talking for the recovery community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comments on this? No. Okay, thank you Frida very much for coming. And I have the proclamation here. I just signed it earlier. Declaring that the Town Council of the Town of Portola Valley hereby designate September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Month. And calls upon everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on then to item 4B, a presentation from the Race and Equity Committee regarding land acknowledgements. Oh, and this has been tabled and we will be bringing it back at our next council meeting. Not able to get the presentation for tonight, so that will be coming to our next council meeting. If there is anybody here, a member of the public who would like to speak to this item, though, without the opportunity to do so now, if you'd like to raise your hand. You can also wait until it comes back if you prefer. Anything, Jeremy?
Nope, nothing at this time.
Okay, thanks. That brings us then to item five, our consent agenda. Consent agenda is considered with all the items as one vote generally unless a council member wishes to pull something from the agenda. The public has an opportunity to comment on each item on the agenda, though. So if you would like to comment on any item on the consent agenda, please raise your hand now.
Mr. Mayor, no hands are raised.
Okay. Then, will anyone from the council like to pull anything or if not? Minutes, okay, we'll pull the minutes. Anything else? Is there a motion on items B through H? By John. Seconded by Mary Ann. Can you call the roll, please, Melissa?
Councilmember Derwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Hughes?
Aye.
Okay, minutes.
Okay, minutes on page three. Is the notice of the council following, choosing the following members of the subcommittee to be listed. Sheriff's contract. And it was me and Sarah. I believe it was actually Craig.
Okay, Jeff and Sarah. I don't recall without going back to the, I don't recall without going back to the video.
Yeah, it was Jeff and Sarah.
I'm sorry, I'll I'll make that change.
Okay, I didn't think it was me, but it could have been. Okay, Jeff and Sarah, sounds right.
Mr. Mayor, if if everyone in the chambers could pull their mic just a little bit closer, I think John in particular, it was a little muffled. We we heard you, okay, but just for, thanks.
Yeah, I noticed that last time while I was out in Zoom land, it can be quite difficult to hear. Okay. So with that, one amendment to the minute, then, is there a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Ann.
Seconded.
Seconded by John. Melissa?
Councilmember Derwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Hughes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Then we move on to our regular agenda. Item 6A is an approval for a letter of thanks to the Housing Element Committee for their past and ongoing work on the town's housing elements. This was requested by Vice Mayor Wernikoff and I think Jeff. As recognition for all of the work that the Housing Element Committee has done to date through 50 hours or so of public meetings, as well as a lot of other work that they've put together to get our Housing Element Committee or Housing Elements draft ready to send off to the state. Sarah, was there anything you wanted to say about this item?
Well, I think, you know, it it's pretty much just restating what you already said. This is really, you know, recognizing the tremendous effort from this community of volunteers within our town and, you know, ju- just really acknowledging that as well as not just the amount of time, but when you really look at the recommendation that the Town Council took particularly on the sites inventory, I'm pretty sure it was 94% of what they recommended is what actually went through. And so not only was it a, you know, a very long and thorough process, I think it was super thoughtful and which was made possible by the extraordinary input by community members. So I think it was the two working together, you know, over these many months to get this product that was essentially, you know, like I said, 94% of it is what was ultimately recommended by the council. So it's really just acknowledgement of both the committee and the community members that participated in the process to get us to this product. I'm, I don't know that we really need to, unless you'd like, Craig, I could could read the letter or whatever you recommend.
Well, I think it's in the packet, so people can read it there. It's not super long, but it'd take a little while to read through it. So is there any other council questions on this item? No. Is there any public comment on this item?
No hands raised.
Okay, then I will bring it back for discussion or a motion.
I continue to, perhaps it's boring them, but talk to my friends in other cities about this magnificent document that I feel so proud of because we didn't just try to check the boxes and kind of get out of our responsibility while still sort of following the law. We actually tried to solve the problem. And I don't know too many communities, particularly of our demographics, who have done that. So my thanks does go to the committee and the community.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
I'll just say, I agree that committee did a fabulous job and I think we're in a much better position than we would have been if had it not gone through their, their heads.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to add my thanks. I think that it's been a real challenge and the work that the committee put in in order to achieve something that, as Mary Ann said, I think satisfies not just the letter of the law, but is really following the spirit of what the state has been asking us to do. And also, I think has a fair chance of actually being approved by the state and not expose us to the penalties that we face for having no valid housing element. So I I think it's it's been a great job for both the committee and the the public at large who participated in the process, so. I think it is a good idea to issue this letter and in recognition of that. Okay, is there a motion then? Move approval?
My second.
Seconded by Sarah.
Councilmember Derwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Yes.
Mayor Hughes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the letter is from each, all of the five of us. And so it will be circulated, I suppose, to get all of our signatures. So we'll figure out how to do that, Sarah, while you're a little bit far away to sign remotely, maybe. We'll figure out. Okay. Brings us to item 6B, an ordinance regarding the posting of places.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, one member of the public raised their hands. I had looked away for a moment, so I'm not sure when that popped up. Rita Comas.
Okay. All right, let's go to Rita then. I'm assuming it's probably comment on 6A.
No, my comment is on 6B, so I'll I'll let you continue, but thank you for noticing my hand up.
Okay, we will call you on 6B then when I come. Thank you, Rita. Okay, so item 6B, Melissa, are you presenting this one?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I brought this item forward because, as the staff report stated, in 1975, the Town Council of the Town of Portola Valley adopted an ordinance listing three places throughout town to post town agendas and other town important documents. And those locations are the Portola Valley Town Hall, Village Square and Portola Corners. To this day, staff is still posting in those three locations, but we are also now posting on the website, which was not available in 1975. And in looking at where we are posting and in such a small town, we felt that it is prudent to update the ordinance to have one posting location physical for a paper location, and that is Portola Valley, the town center here, right outside of Town Hall, as well as our website. And we will continue to push agendas forward to the public as we do now by listing them in the newsletters and the digest. And I did want to point out, one of the current posting locations that we are posting at, which is at Village Square, the bulletin board that we use there is in pretty bad disrepair. It is very old and staff is not sure of when exactly it was installed. It's not quite big enough to fit any of our agendas. And so we have to get creative and cut out the corners. And then we have to post over town papers outside of the bulletin board. And then the bulletin board itself on the inside, the cork is popping out. So every time we open it, we have to hold that up. It's, yeah. And so we just felt that it's time to bring this item forward for your review.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council questions?
Thanks, Melissa. Okay, you explained why you aren't going to post at Village Square anymore, and that really makes sense. Is Portola Corners, which I assume is like Triangle Park, the Alpine and Portola, does that have similar issues with the bulletin boards?
No, that bulletin board is very large and it fits, fits our paperwork just fine. We just found that if we're posting at town center, it's not common to have multiple locations for an agency to post their agendas anymore. A lot of agencies are going to one location to post paper agendas. And then everything now is being promoted digitally to go to the website. And so to be more, to fall in line more with other agencies in our area, we thought that it's best that we do the same.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more council questions, we will go to public comment and Rita first.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment on this issue. In the past couple of weeks, several members of our community have lost electricity. And our electricity, our grid is just not dependable unless you have a generator. And, you know, removing these other locations and having people be dependent on then going to, you know, the town center, which sometimes, you know, like if there is on Thursdays, you you wouldn't be able to get to the building. And removing the locations where people are used to walking to see these things since 1972. Yes, other towns are doing things this way, online. We do not have dependable, you know, Wi-Fi in our lovely town. We do not have dependable electricity in our town. And it's, you know, it saddens me to say that. And I don't know how many people are on this meeting from the public. And but there's not many when we have 4,500 people in this town and they're probably dependent. And they're not going to hear about this, especially when this is only one reading of this particular thing. Yeah, this is, this is a town and other towns are doing things a particular way. But I, this perhaps needs to be tabled for a couple of years until we have dependable electricity. It's 2022, September, and dependable Wi-Fi in this town. I I don't think that this is the right time to to make this change for our community. Other people may think differently, but I don't think we can afford with the lack of information we are receiving because we can't always depend on the information and meetings are canceled. And it would be hard for people that don't use the internet the way that it could be or that don't have Wi-Fi to know that a meeting is then canceled. And I just suggest that this gets tabled for a while longer in our beautiful town. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Are there any other hands raised?
No other hands are raised at this time.
Okay, I will bring it back to the council then for discussion.
Hughes, I did just want to make one point of clarification. This is the first reading of this ordinance, and there will be a second reading to adopt the ordinance if this passes tonight. There will be a second reading made on September 28th, so it will come before you two. It's just, I just want to make that clear.
Right, that's the process with any ordinance. Okay. John?
Yeah, Melissa, a question. This is a recently adopted state regulation. Is that correct?
Yes, the, well, it's, I I don't, I can't give you the exact date, but the Brown Act does say that if you post an agenda to the website and one physical location, you are in compliance. And so by doing this, we would, we would be in compliance.
Any other council comment? No, I think that this makes a lot of sense. I think the number of people who physically go and look at the agenda and either on bulletin boards probably significantly dwarfed by the number that come to our website these days. And it is still there, physically at the Town Hall, which is a very accessible location, so. Is there a motion then on this? It would be to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, right?
I'll make the motion that we waive first reading and introduce the ordinance, amending, posting places in this municipal code.
Okay, moved by John.
I will second it, and I hope that if there are people who feel strongly about this, as does Rita, that they, we hear from them at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So moved by John, seconded by Mary Ann. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Derwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Hughes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, then we'll be back at our next meeting. Let's see, that brings us then to item 6C. The ADU Ambassador Program to assist with community education and a survey regarding ADUs. Sarah, I think this was your item, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so so this ADAU ambassador concept came out of the process. Well, first of all, Laura, I want to acknowledge you and of course, jump in to to clarify if I, if you have anything that you you think I've missed here because you do such a thorough job. So anyhow, the the concept of the ADU ambassador came out of the process of the Ad-Hoc Housing Element Committee to date. There was kind of two things that were, that have been a common theme. Well, there are several things, but two stand out that are related to this with respect to ADUs. We heard a lot of passion from many community members about ADUs and JADUs and kind of leaning into them more with as part of the housing element. So that's one thing. Another thing we heard a lot from community members was a request to kind of harness the commu- the the spirit of community volunteerism to support initiatives within the housing element and specifically with respect to understanding better our landscape currently of ADUs and what the ADUs and JADUs, when I say ADUs, I kind of use, assume it's it's interchangeable. So to kind of assess where we are currently and get a sense of what the the demand is for building more in the the short and medium term. And so the concept here is that we would identify two ADU ambassadors who would help support a process, a survey process. And so what I want to do is I will, just so I don't miss anything, I do want to read the details of this in the discussion portion. So that's at the bottom of this agenda, this agenda item under discussion. And so specifically out of the housing element process, there was interest in five, five specific areas. One, increasing education and outreach around ADUs and JADUs. Two, verifying the town's list of existing, the town has a list, so this would be to verify that list of existing ADUs and JADUs in town. And then assuring that we track them separately. There was a lot of support specifically for tracking and identifying them and tracking them separately. Three, determining community interest in the construction of additional JADUs and ADUs and/or the conversion of an existing space to an ADU or JADU. Four, gathering data on the current number of unpermitted ADUs and JADUs in town and any owner's interest in an amnesty program that would formalize those units. And then finally, number five, determine the number of properties interested in renting their ADU and JADU at the below market rates, which are the published rates for San Mateo County low and very low income levels. And so what we want to do is run a survey that will get specifically at those five specific areas. And our hope is that we can identify two ADU ambassadors to help do two things specifically with respect to that. One is to generate resident interest and support any education around this. And two, to execute the survey. And so by that, we mean that the survey will be developed by the planning and and Building Department to get at those specific questions. But then we're looking at these two volunteers to be, to kind of own, trying to get the highest response rate possible within town. So our goal right now is a minimum of 80% response rate. And so this, we imagine, will require a variety of methods of outreach, whether it be online, door to door, standing out with the survey in front of Roberts, you know, any way that we can to try and get at every household. And so that's kind of the 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 role of the ADU ambassador, those two specific things, generating interest, marketing this concept and being a point person for education. Want to note also that the education will include, you know, these, these people would, these volunteers would be trained by staff and have educational materials provided by staff. So one, again, doing the outreach and education and the marketing around it and then executing the survey. Other kind of two, two, two additional comments on that is that the the role is not related to interpreting the housing element or replacing anything related to that. It really is around the survey and education. And it doesn't supersede or change the programs that are already in the draft housing element. So it assumes that housing element is as is. This is specifically to drive execution of the survey, education around the survey, so that we can get this information. We're estimating that the time commitment would be approximately 10 to 15 hours a week between the end of October and early December. And there is, I won't read through this, but in the, in the agenda here, we have the application process, the application criteria, the applicant criteria and a ti- a proposed timeline with the goal of having the survey results to dovetail with when there's an upcoming planning commission meeting. So Laura, please fill in any blanks I may have missed.
I think that's a great summary. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Mary Ann?
Yeah, I had some, some questions about the five central points. So increase education, um, and you said that the ambassadors would be the point people for education. Would they also alert people of what I call some of the little hidden mines that come when you, uh, construct an ADU, for instance? Cow water, if you have to have fire sprinklers, and I'm still not clear on whether all ADUs need fire sprinklers. I did. That can trigger a larger meter, which is a more expensive water bill. And then septic tank, if you're on septic, once you, uh, go beyond the maximum bedrooms for your property, you have to enlarge your septic tank. And again, both of these are out of the town's control. And then the third little mine was property taxes. You will see an increase in your property taxes, right, John? So I would, I'd just like to be sure that this sort of education gets in there too. Would you think that it would?
Laura, you want to take that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Um, yes, we do expect to include those types of things. It would be at a fairly high level, um, but we're going to produce educational documents that are going to be geared towards, uh, homeowners, towards property owners as opposed to towards architects, which is, you know, we have a tendency, um, in our department to gear towards architects. So we're going to try to give some examples of some of the obstacles sometimes that people face, give a sense of permit fees, give a sense of timing, so that people, um, can feel more educated when they indicate whether they might be interested in constructing an ADU or not.
Okay, thanks. Number two, would the ambassadors be the ones who would work on verifying and tracking the existing ADUs?
We, we have a list of existing ADUs in town that we think is quite complete. Um, but there might be some that actually count as J-ADUs that we have counted as ADUs. We want to verify that list, verify some of the data that we have. And so, um, this would be the, the ambassadors would get the people to participate in the survey. And then staff would be comparing that against what we have in our lists. And if the ambassadors had some additional time, you know, within some of those tasks, we certainly could work with them in, in doing that. But the point is really to verify what we have and add, add any few ADUs that may not be on our list right now.
Great, thanks. And then number four, which is the one about gathering the data on the unpermitted ADUs and, um, gauging interest in an amnesty program, which I presume would be in the survey. Will the surveys be anonymous? People don't have to put their names down?
So the way we thought about, about this is it would have to be a, a two, two, um, tiered approach. Because yes, of course, if we wanted somebody to seek out amnesty, that portion would need to be anonymous. So w- we haven't, we don't have this all fleshed out yet, but the way, um, we've discussed it with Laura is that there would be a survey that would get to pretty much everything other than, um, amnesty. And then we would, which would obviously have to be property address specific. So that part would not be, um, anonymous, but then we would also, within that process, promote, if you happen to have one, here's a link to an anonymous survey, and so we would capture that separately.
Great, that's, that's really smart way to do it. And then the last one, five. When, and this is for Cara, uh, just checking back. Renting these units at below mic, low market rate, we're not talking about deed restricted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Below market rate, for instance, just off the top of my head, I believe is seventeen hundred for a one-bedroom and twenty-one hundred for a two-bedroom, which is significantly less than anything, you know, we see currently of it, you know, usually in town, it's thirty-five hundred to fifty-five hundred.
Okay, any other questions? Nope. Okay, I'll go to public comment then. Are there any hands raised? Two hands raised.
We have Karen Askey.
Okay, Karen first.
Hi all. Uh, first of all, I, I'd like to thank Sarah and Laura for, um, putting this proposal together. I think it's a fabulous idea. Uh, as you might know, I, I'm a big proponent of ADUs and J-ADUs. And I, I think we really need to, you know, buckle down on this. Um, one question I have is why only two ambassadors? And particularly when you said it's volunteering is ten to fifteen hours a week? Because that's a lot of hours. I realize it's a short timeframe that you're looking at. Um, is that realistic? And if we had more ambassadors and we had people going door-to-door, like I'm thinking two people going door-to-door in this town is, is a big task, but if we had more, um, could we get more responses, really better understand the entire town? So that's, that's really what I was thinking. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. And who's next?
The next speaker is Karen.
Other Karen.
Other Karen.
Hi, I guess Karen's all think alike in this, in this, um, situation. Um, I also think this is a great idea. Um, and I also have the exact same concern that Karen Askey had in that, um, I just don't think that's enough people and enough timeframe to get good survey results. Um, two years ago, I walked the entire town, the beginning of the pandemic, counting wood shake roofs and eucalyptus trees. And that took me probably, uh, you know, I don't know, fifteen hours a week, like this kind of same down timeframe, it took me about five or six weeks. But I wasn't talking to people, I was just looking. And I can imagine some of these conversations being really in-depth and, um, trying to get an eighty percent survey results. Um, that's really ambitious. Um, for those of people who have done surveys, they know it's, you know, it's great if you get ten percent, it's actually fabulous. So I would encourage, um, a little bit more of a realistic there, um, and adding more people or adding more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any more hands?
Next is Dana. Um, Dennis. Thank you.
Let me, hi, I also just think it's brilliant. I was so excited that, that this is coming before us. I would suggest that a member of the ASCC and Planning Commission are involved in the creation of the survey. Um, I think that they, they know a lot of the history of the buildings that have gone in that could be converted. Um, and as I've said along, having been on the ASCC for so long, we approved lots and lots of secondary structures that were not even meant to be ADUs, pool houses, et cetera, et cetera, that were approved by the town and the building inspector was involved. And I, and I've said, there are a bunch of them with, that we put deed restrictions on. So that's why I was curious about following the deed restriction list. But anyway, I, I just, I think it would be a good idea to have residents involved in the creation of the survey as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. And now I can see list. Judith Murphy, Heather.
Hi, thank you. Um, I think this is a great idea. I also think that you'd be better off having three rather than two, uh, to spread it around a little bit. Um, I think in order to do a good job, these people are going to have to have answers. However, people, the people they talk to are going to want answers, substantive answers. And I spent a good deal of time today going through the town website, trying to see how many answers I could find. And the town website has guidelines, but it looks like they're the Palo Alto guidelines. It has the Palo Alto logo on it real big. Um, maybe that's because the state sets these guidelines and they're all exactly the same. But I, I wondered if in fact our rules about exactly what the kitchen has to be and exactly how many, how big the refrigerator has to be are our rules. And the only other thing is that the ADU checklist that I found, um, assumes a new build. It's very, it's extensive as it needs to be for a new build. And the town is swarming, as Dana says, with, uh, pool houses, gyms, et cetera, that were built as accessory buildings, uh, when they weren't allowed to be ADUs. And, um, they don't need foundations, they've had their geologic work, the, you know, et cetera, et cetera. That I would hope that the town would build, um, build out a checklist that's very simplified for those things who've been permitted, they were up to code at the time they were built, maybe ten years ago, and give us, um, a list of exactly what they need, because the ambassador's going to be asked questions about things like this. And if they don't exist yet, then the ambassadors can't really do the job you're hoping they will do. So there's got to be a lot of, uh, more fleshing out, I think, of the details of not the ambassador program, but the ADU program itself in our town, um, in order to maximize our use of the ambassadors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. And I see no more hands raised. And so I can bring it back then to the council. Um, Sarah, I think there, there were, were a couple of points raised by members of the public maybe to address. I think that
Well, for, for one-
Something that's maybe beyond what this initial ADU ambassador program is.
Yeah, so, so firstly, just, um, Laura, can you describe to, to the comments that were made about the materials, the current materials versus what the plan is for future educational materials for ambassadors to be using? Could you kind of describe your thinking there and what you have in the works?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to. Um, we have preliminary ideas about this, but we still need to flesh them out. The materials for this still have to be created. We would not be relying on the materials that we already have on the website. We certainly agree that the materials we have on the website would not be sufficient for this purpose. So we want to create some, um, materials for, that are resident-focused, so using, um, not too many terms of art, not too many, um, acronyms, trying to describe things in simple language that people can understand to describe the process of, for example, building an ADU that's detached from the house or converting internal space into an ADU or J-ADU, thinking about the amount of time, um, resources, you know, what kinds of professionals you need to be able to do this type of work, what kind of fees you're talking about, um, even some numbers on construction costs or valuation that we have in our records, so that people could have a sense, um, you know, kind of realistically, like maybe a couple of case studies that could go into the materials of some people that went through the process and what their experience was. So we're trying to think if I'm a, if I'm a homeowner and I'm talking to, um, my neighbor about this, who's an ADU ambassador, what's the basic information that that person would need to be able to fill out the survey in a meaningful way? And so it's not going to be extremely detailed, you know, the same level of detail that we would go into with an architect, um, on exactly like what the steps are and what the checklists are. It would be more like if I just sat down to explain to someone, hey, you're thinking about building an ADU, what do I need to plan for? Um, so to the points made earlier, you have to think about your, um, infrastructure capacity, your septic capacity. You have to think about, um, physically, do you need engineering? Do you, what kind of professionals do you need? Do you need an architect? Do you need a designer? Do you need a civil engineer? What might you be in for? And I think a lot of people, um, might be surprised how expensive it is to build a detached ADU. And I think they might be surprised how cost-effective it can be to do an internal conversion of an existing building into an ADU or a J-ADU. So trying to bring some of those things to light that might not be common sense, even for people that have been following this, um, and try to provide basic information for people that have not been following this at all. So I hope that's helpful in our thinking so far.
Yeah, and I think the only thing that I would add to that, and maybe Laura, you, you'll be able to, to clarify it better than I, but are, the concept that we've been talking about for this role is really, the, the ambassador is not a building and planning expert. And so their role is to really execute the survey. So try to get, you know, the mission of this role is to get to eighty percent completion rate if we can in town. Um, that's their primary role. We want them to be educated with the basics of the information as Laura just described. But for somebody who's actually going to go through it and get into the details, are clearly going to be needing to speak with, um, a staff member from, for planning and building. So these people will kind of be that first level of information, but for, you know, the nitty-gritty, for sure, those people would get deferred to town staff. We can't expect a volunteer to be able to, to, you know, answer all those kinds of questions. So, um, anyhow, I hope that gets to a little bit of what, what Judy was thinking and asking about.
This, uh, it sounds a lot, and, and then discussing this previously, Sarah, it sounds like this is also partly modeled off what we did with, I think, Lori DuVall when we were setting up.
Yeah, exactly.
Where it's, it's really having, you know, some, some materials that are prepared by staff. And in that case, it was the sheriff's office and, um, town staff. And then having a, a resident ambassador to go out and kind of bring it to the public at large and have those conversations, um, in a way that's, it's a little harder for staff.
It's exactly what it was modeled after. You're right.
Yep, thank you. Okay.
And so I guess, I hope, I guess the only, only thing, there was a lot of interest and feedback from the community, uh, on this whole, in this whole area as it relates to the housing element. And so I, I really do hope that we get, um, a lot of applications. Um, um, because I think it's something where people really can contribute in a meaningful way in town and hopefully it can be a fun role as well, so.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. See you for this stuff, yeah, Mary Ann.
And, here's the chair. Sarah, can you address the question? The question we heard from more than one, um, member of the public about the number of two ambassadors versus three or four?
Well, I guess, um, certainly, we, I, I guess I'll go back to, we started with two because, well, well, either way, I, I don't know that I'm personally set in stone about that. I, one thing I was thinking when I was hearing those comments was perhaps we have two that are identified as leads and we come up with what the execution plan is actually going to be. And if we need kind of more boots on the ground, maybe we identify a couple more at that time. I mean, I don't, I personally don't envision the majority of this being door-to-door. I envision the majority of it being people responding online. Um, and then filling in the gaps with the door-to-door, but I guess we won't know until we know. Um, I don't know, what do, what do the rest of you guys think about, about the number?
Well, one, one thing I think it's important is to have some level of consistency, so that if you have a bunch of people going out, if it is door-to-door, however it is, that everybody is singing from the same hymn book, you know, that, that they've all got the same facts, the same information, the same things. You don't get a skewed response where half of the town is answering one version of the survey and half the town's answering with a different fact base, um, and then it's harder to, to really understand what it means.
True.
So, you know, the larger the group, I think the harder it is to, to have that coordination. Um, it's not impossible, and three isn't that much harder than two, four is probably not that much harder. But at some point, it starts getting a little harder to maybe manage. Um, so I, I don't think two is necessarily a hard limit, and I'd be happy to, you know, as you're doing the interviews, leave it up to the subcommittee to figure out whether two is the right number. Maybe we set a cap and say, it's more than four and come back to the council or something, but, um.
No, I, I agree, Craig. I, I, I think that the line between getting way too involved in the, in the details and making it understandable at the really more, more high-level level, is going to be important. And, and I think if you can, the more you can do with written material, and I think that's probably the, the point of this, uh, first meeting or two of this group that would be able to put, put the material together that could be passed out. And then at that point, at that point, maybe you're right, Sarah, maybe you need to add a couple of people to help pan things out or something that they don't, wouldn't necessarily need to be able to come up with answers off the tops of their head, like the, uh, people who have some little more in-depth training would have.
Yeah, and I think the one thing I do want to clarify is the survey will be, um, you know, we, the, the role of these people is to execute the survey, not create the surveys. So they'll be executing it and fielding questions and sharing materials based on documentation that Laura just described.
Right. Um, And I, I think the other thing is, this is, this is essentially step one in, you know, what's coming with ADUs. In our housing element, there are a lot more programs around ramping up ADUs. There are a lot more programs around ramping up ADUs. Um and so, you know, if this is successful, it may be a model for some of that work once we begin it, when the housing element is actually in place.
I think it's a great program. I think we move forward.
So do you guys want to increase the number beyond two? Or?
I would say, you know, I would leave it up to the discretion of the subcommittee as an interview. I mean, we'll see how many applicants we get. I hope.
Right, exactly.
But I think if, you know, as you guys interview, if you find, you know, four great people instead of two, and you think that it would be manageable and, you know, that the people would work well together, then. I wouldn't be opposed to increasing it up to four, but I'd I'd leave it to the subcommittee to figure out whether it's two, three or four.
I agree.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Sound good to you as a member of the subcommittee?
Great follow-through, Sarah, something we don't always see from all of us.
Okay, um is there a motion then? I guess we need to authorize the subcommittee to do this.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the ambassador, the ADU ambassador program.
Oh, second. Okay, moved by Mary Ann, seconded by John.
Councilmember Derwin.
I.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Hi.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Motion carries.
The one thing we we should have talked about before we fully moved off of that, just to make a comment, is getting the word out about the, you know, this is not, this is a. We only have nine attendees, which is a very low number relative to what we've seen in the last couple of months on these council meetings. So we've uh in addition to. We'll have to post this, I guess, on PV Forum. Um obviously, it's going to go out through the normal town channels, but um for those of you that are on the call, um please help us spread the word.
Yep, absolutely. And um I don't know if we have a housing element committee meeting or any other subcommittee coming up.
Not not soon enough.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think all of us through our, as our liaisons to our various committee meetings, just let every committee know about it.
Actually, you know what? That's a good idea. I wonder, um, I wonder, I'm just riffing right now, if we could have, ask all committee chairs. To share this over whatever their next upcoming meeting is um. You know, I I know some of them only meet monthly, so it'll be too late, but but even if they could share it by email, or I don't know.
Yeah, we'll we'll figure out how to get the word out. Okay, um that then brings us to the end of our regular agenda and we are on to council liaison committee regional agency reports. Mary Ann, not a whole lot of them left for you for this.
I only have, I only have two. And really.
Finding down.
Well, you know, I've been out in. Detachville for a long time. Okay, I went to a council of cities dinner on August twenty-sixth, and it was held at Sanchez Adobe Park in Pacifica. And I don't know if any of you have been to Sanchez Adobe Park, but it is definitely worth a visit. Have you been there, Melissa? Um it the the Adobe building is the second oldest building in San Mateo County. It was the home of Francisco Sanchez, the mayor of San Francisco, and the owner of the entire Rancho San Pedro, which is, but what is even more interesting, it is the site. Of in a loany village, the of the Remitush, a loany village of. Puristac, not sure how to pronounce that, P R U R I S T I C. Um going back to the original, I think they're called people like three thousand years ago. Uh they also have a little museum with artifacts that they have found there, which are fascinating. So there was um the first speaker was a man from the um San Mateo County Historical Association. He was the president Mitch Postle, but he had a special guest speaker, Jonathan Cordero. Who is a native Californian of Remitush Shaloni Bay, Mewak and Chumash descent, and he is descended from the Arame tribe. That was located there near Pacifica. He's also the foundation and chair of the Association of Remitush Shaloni. And he was um fascinating to listen to. So it was a very nice evening and they had a really wonderful buffet of Mexican food where they would make you. Um food on the grill to order and a ton of other stuff. It was delicious. And then the only other report is that I, as were you two, um was present at the day. When the kids went back to school. Uh I was over by Alpine and Portella Road. With a lot of school district people and people from committees and donuts. My recommendation is next year, way more donuts, maybe a big sign that says donuts. And I'm not sure if you should move the location. It was tough to get kids right there. I'd be curious to know how your location did.
Where where were you? Were you on the uphill side?
We were, we, no, we were more, we were on the Portola side. Yeah. But really, the donuts were the big deal. When the kids saw donuts, they came.
Well, a lot of parents came back. Uh emergency preparedness meeting, um let's see, it's uh some discussion about um. Radio repeaters being upgraded, um EMRS installation on top of the tank, I guess it's up in. And discussions of their participation coming up in the town picnic very soon. Recommended recommended uh the EPC over their, we're planning future activities to evaluate the priorities of the for the evacuation study going forward. Next steps. There's a report from Selena Brown regarding the SMC alert move to the rave platform, which is still in the process. It's uh. At this point, they're planning to have the move by in November. And. So that San Mateo County is leading the state dispatch center. They took six hundred and eighty-four calls in four hours during the Edgewood Fire. And partly reason, part of the reason it was so successful, got on it so quickly. See. It's a discussion of different apps that people can use to find local incidents that are going on. There's one called Watch Duty, another called Pulse Point and Smoke Point. It all apps that you can download to your phone and get notifications. And um. There's a move on the committee to move forward with a some sort of program. They haven't identified it completely yet to uh. Raise the awareness of which zone haven zones people are in in town. A lot of people don't, don't know, and it's kind of an important thing to know once there is an event. The uh next one is the planning commission meeting. Uh. Was um. Two main issues on the agenda, ones of subdivision, final subdivision map for forty fires, one right there in the corner of Los Trancos and and Alpine. Has been sort of up on hold for a while and now that was approved. Alpine use, up on hills, conditional use permit was uh came back for an increase from seven hundred and seven hundred and fifty members. And the main topics of discussion were potential parking issues and um. Truck noise. Been a plan put together going forward for the um. For the Alpine Hills staff to do some informal uh traffic counts and see if there really is a problem parking on normal busy days. Which is uh information that hasn't been readily available before. See. There was some discussion about uh. Recognizing senior members in a membership program in of of the club so that people who have been members a long time don't get priced out, basically. And. That was pretty much it. There was a, was a discussion after, at the end of the meeting regarding the types of minutes that are appropriate for the planning commission. Some cons- concern that when the meeting is um. Does not have any actions that an action minutes don't really show you much of anything. You know, that's, that's an ongoing discussion. I think that uh Laura has been bringing back some ideas on. And that was it.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. You're on mute.
Sorry, I do not have any updates.
Okay, um I had two at the wildfire committee meeting on the sixth um. A presentation by Mid Penn on the work that they're doing, fire mitigation work on their property and their properties in Portola Alley. Um that was a. Nice update on everything that they're working on. Fire marshal was there and gave an update on his work on home hardening code update that he's doing. Sounds like that's maybe a little bit delayed from what we thought the schedule was being to be, but still making good progress there. Uh they're gonna have a table at town picnic, which is this coming weekend. Okay. And I had BPTS on the seventh. Um and that was a lot of planning for lots of talks. Um sounds like they have enough volunteers now. The sheriff's department is me helping coordinate the volunteers for doing the street closure. Um to the usual rolling street closure for about forty-five minutes or an hour or so races run. Um and Jeremy, do we have updated numbers of how many people have registered? It was well over a hundred people had registered and there are always a lot more to show up on the day, or a hundred and sixty something, I think you said.
Yeah, well, the numbers I saw on Monday were a hundred and forty-six. We're expecting those to jump up quite a bit more. Um last year, we had approximately two hundred.
Yep. Okay, um well, weather's shaping up to look like hopefully it won't be too bad. There's a little bit of rain in the coming days, but I think Saturday looked pretty good still, so. Yep. Um, let's see, they also. A liaison with Mid Penn, that's Mid Penn is now working on the Hawthorns property and figuring out. Whatever traffic issues may come up there. Um and then, yes, I was also at the back to school day donut thing, or John and I were at the one that was next to the priory. Caught a lot of Armadale kids were coming through back there. And uh the kids didn't seem to stop for the donuts, the parents did. So the parents, parents would take the kid to school and on the way back, they stopped off, donut in the chat, which was good. And uh yeah, I thought the location there was pretty good. I mean, it's right on the path where all the kids are going. They're all, they're on that side of the street and they're going right by there and there's a nice. Yeah, that bit off the road that gave us plenty of space to have a table and set up. We didn't run out of donuts. We didn't, probably didn't have nearly as many people as. But yeah, a bigger sign that says donuts would probably maybe tempt more of the kids to stop as they see these grownups standing around this table and they're like, I don't know. Yeah, pretty scary. Um but it was, it was, it was a, it was a good thing. I had a couple of good conversations with parents going back and forth, especially about, you know, safe routes to school and biking and walking to school and stuff. So it was, it was good. Um, okay, so that, oh, is there any public comment on this agenda item on item seven? I see no trades, so we want to move on to item eight, town managers' report.
Thank you very much. I have a bit of an extensive report, so my apologies. And this is in no particular order. Again, hope to see everybody. It's us to tots this weekend. Um the management team had a retreat in uh mid-August. Um it was actually a great opportunity for. Um I think in particular, Melissa, to spend more time with a few members of the team and to talk about um council priorities and other major issues for the year. Um we are um in an effort to continue to improve our um project management. We are utilizing uh the Asana tool to um to do so. We are beta testing it right now for um the council priority. Uh management of the different projects there that will be presenting to the council on October twenty-sixth. Woodside Fire Protection District has a um a grant that they're pursuing um. With uh the partners at CPAW, Committee Partners Assistance for Wildfire. They hired a a grant writer to assist the district in those efforts. The um grant is a community wildfire defense grant. And uh Woodside Fire has been speaking to both the town of Woodside and town of Portola Valley on the various projects that could be included. Um at this time, it, the woods, um excuse me, the Portola Valley projects uh look to be twofold. One is a, is a thing for uh defensible. Space program um similar to the one that's in Woodside. Um and the second is a variety of vegetation management work primarily um in uh, I'd say, Upper Alpine. Uh Los Trancos and uh PB Ranch areas as designed by Fire Marshal Bullard. Um so we're very optimistic um about receiving the grant. Next, perhaps next month, but more likely on November ninth, um I understand the emergency preparedness committee will be making a presentation to the town council on their recommendations. Uh based uh on, based off of the traffic capacity evacuation study. Um at the end of that study, there were a number of mitigation. Measures to pursue, and I understand that these subcommittees has worked on ranking those and will be making that presentation at that time for the council's consideration. Um I took a um an initial meeting with um um the management team at the priory. Uh regarded to regarding evacuation issues. Um so they're starting to have more in-depth conversations related to um what an evacuation scenario would be like for their. Um students and staff and uh the folks who uh live there. Um I'm anticipating internal meetings at the priory for a couple of weeks until they start meeting with the Department of Emergency Management and a larger group. Um in, at the October meeting of BPTS, I'm expecting to see an item related to a tree removal um on the northern. Intersection of Brookside and Portola Road. There's a large redwood tree that's on town on property that some residents have indicated they believe is a visibility hazard um on Portola Road. Um so um given the nature of um the sensitivity of these kinds of conversations, I've asked BPTS to weigh in to allow for public discussion if there's any uh comment from members of the public. In early October, uh committee members are signing up for Brown Act training. Um so that is coming. Uh I am very pleased to announce that the town um made an offer and uh Tom has, his name's Tom. Uh has accepted uh becoming our new permit technician. It's a new position for the planning and building department. He'll be starting in early Oc- mid-October. Um in, during the week of October third, uh the town will be uh. Uh promoting a new website feature, soliciting comments on the sheriff's contract negotiations. Uh this is a portal where residents can provide their thoughts, comments and concerns about um what uh they'd like to see in a contract. Um and as a reminder, on October twenty-sixth, the sheriff, um the council will be having a conversation about that contract. I understand that uh sheriff uh elect corpus will be attending. The nineteen twenty audit has been completed. Uh we got it uh just recently and staff is taking a look at it right now and we're hopeful in the next couple of weeks. Um together late September, early October, we'll have a meeting of the finance committee and then bring that to the council. And uh we've already started work on the FY twenty twenty-one audit. I was at the Sequoias on. August twenty-sixth with my colleagues from Woodside Fire and the Sequoias management team to discuss. Uh wildfire related issues. Um Jermaine to the Sequoias, uh very well attended. Um I think there were eighty plus people in the audience and then they also showed that on their closed circuit TV. Um was a well-received presentation. Um really appreciate um. Bud, looks like you're listening tonight. Bud, thank you for helping put all that together. Really appreciate being invited. The uh town um has, as you know, an art donation policy and recently um a resident um. Has, as you know, an art donation policy and recently a resident, actually someone who lives just across the street from town center. And Woodside wanted to donate a a horse sculpture, a gift horse, if you will. We put together a committee per the policy to discuss acceptance of that gift and we tended to be. We'll be recommending recommending that to the council. We have not decided on a location yet. And we thought the best approach would be to ask the residents where they thought they liked that to be. So once Howard's had an opportunity to look at some sites that are suitable, technically speaking for that. We will have a website portal and solicit thoughts from the residents on where they'd like to see the sculptures. It's quite amazing. The hazard mitigation plan is now in its first year maintenance. Period. That's primarily where we provide updates to the state on. Progress on the mitigation efforts that are located within that. Per the direction of the council early this year, I'm working very hard to alter the scoring that was done by the consultant team. As it relates to wildfire. So I've had a couple of different meetings with the county folks on that. And I am optimistic that will happen. We are going to be participating in the Great Shakeout. Earthquake simulation event utilizing our V O C tool in October. And I wanted to end in that we're starting to hear from cities on their initial conversations. With Housing and Community Development Department at the State of California on their housing elements. We've we've had it publicly. Redwood City has, they had a rejection of their housing element. We're aware of a second city that had a conversation in the last couple of weeks with HCD that apparently did not go well. I'm going to be speaking to their city manager very soon to find out what happened there. The it looks to be a pretty difficult process for a number of the cities, but we remain optimistic that the housing element as as we have it will ultimately be approved. Even if there are minor requests from HCD, they officially call it a rejection, but that that nomenclature isn't necessarily a bad thing. So that we would expect to have the first inkling from HCD next month. And I think that is my report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? As you read his hand.
Thank you for taking my comment question. I'm eager to see the twenty twenty audit and and the twenty twenty one audit. And. And see what the letter, what the auditor letter says about that compared to the last auditor letter for the. Last audit we had in twenty nineteen. But one of the things, you know, I mentioned earlier about the electricity going out. And there seems to be messages from the residents that, you know, from their cell phones, I guess, on the forum. But nothing from the town coordinating the message to people. And, you know, perhaps it's hard because if people don't have electricity, they don't usually have wifi, but maybe they can get the message on their phones. But who is is coordinating that information? And then on the corner of Westridge and Alpine Road, since December twenty third, there is that. Bit of eyesore, it was, you know, I'm sure my phones sometimes work only because that is there. The trailer that's been there since December twenty third. It's a very big eyesore and there's constant work there and cones and and there's lots of activity, car activity on that corner all the time. Along with work with AT&amp;T. Who is coordinating that? And how long will that it's it's been nine months that it's been up there? Is that the permanent location? Is that the permanent viewing? We seem to be so concerned on how things look, but really to turn to my home, I'm looking at that since. Since December, but who is coordinating utility issues in in the town? When in January, my phones were down, my landlines were down for forty days. And there was really no one to contact except being on hold forever with AT&amp;T. And with these power outages, is there someone that we can contact that's coordinating those particular? Issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
Comment on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if you'd like to. It wasn't really an agenda item, but if you'd like.
Yeah, no, but I'm happy to take the opportunity as we staff put out previously and. At least one. Newsletter. It may have been two, but at least one. The. The staff is is speaking with AT&amp;T on a regular basis to get updates on when the work will be completed there. That is not a permanent. Fixed to the problem. It actually looks, what we understand is that they're going to move that vault equipment to another location. When I reached, Howard Young does that primarily. And I reached out to my contacted PG&E six to eight weeks ago. And at that point, they indicated that they were hopeful this fall. At that point, they said about three months, so we're getting close to that. So they're do a contact for me in the next week or so. To ask if they're still going to meet that deadline to have that work completed and the truck removed. And we'll put that information in a future newsletter.
I think you said PG&E there, but.
Oh, sorry, AT&amp;T.
Yeah, thank you. As far as PG&E, we, when there are power outages, they generally know about them very quickly and they coordinate that activity. So if there are problems where PG&E is not doing what they say they're going to do, then feel free to reach out to the town or the CPUC. Okay, let's see, that brings us to digest.
One, one thing before we move on, Jeremy, I was wondering with respect to your. Managers report, if I know you have been spending some time recently on communications issues. And I just was wondering if there was any high level information you'd want to update. The group on just because we've talked about in the mayor vice mayor meeting and stuff like that.
Sure, thank you for the opportunity to do so. So the staff, Melvin and I, Melvin Gaines, Assistant Town Manager, and I have spent considerable amount of time in the last. Few weeks, but even before that, working with the team on the communication issues is reported to us. We've had, I would say, a handful plus of resident concerns about not getting responses to some emails. At this point, I'm I don't see a systemic issue with the town responding. One of the things that that I have done in in recent weeks, including reaffirming with the staff. Our commitment to responsiveness to the public, so that's acknowledgement of emails and follow up as it relates to when. If it's something that takes longer than a few days, getting back to them. And having spoken to a number of individual staff members, both the management and line staff memo. Level, excuse me, I'm confident that as a as a rule of thumb practice that that we have done that, there certainly have been notable exceptions. And in those cases, I've asked the staff to to make sure that they're reaching out to the people who 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 had not heard from us and that's been happening. So we're. In the early stages of what I'm calling a communications audit to track. All of the different communications that we put out and see if there's any issues related to any of those, any holes. Each department is different in kind of what they do. You know, the planning and building department has some unique. Features related to their communication, I think particularly along the thirty day thirty day period that they can look at plans. I regret that there's been any. Any concern from any resident about this. You know, I remind my team that, you know, we're human, we're going to make mistakes every so often. And as long as we're not seeing a systemic failures that relates to our communications, then, you know, let's just keep trying our best. And when we make a mistake, is there really any any of these that that we reach out? I posted on the forum last week. And having I've talked to the mayor today and I'm going to give at least a forum update, I think tomorrow or Monday, just on kind of where things are. My initial solicitation request from the public, is it related to, you know, if there's any concerns that any of them have? Got a couple, which was very helpful. I'm hopeful for more if there are more. But we've, you know, where I think that there have been some issues even around particular times in the organization when things were incredibly busy. Like particularly in the January February timeframe and around transitional moments when, you know, staff isn't here for an extended period of time or new staff. Like, again, I have a handful of those. I'm glad it doesn't seem to be a much bigger problem, but if it is, I'm looking forward to hearing from the public on. On that and addressing it as quickly as we possibly can.
Thank you. And I just just to to take the opportunity. To share, you know, what what I've shared with with Jeremy and and this was before kind of the flurry of of emails in recent weeks. This goes back to a conversation we were having about a month ago. You know, in in my mind, I look at communications in in three categories. The first being outbound communications and those are things like the newsletter and things that the town sends out. And I think there's been a lot of progress there and I think the new newsletter format is great. And we've got some great information going out. The second category is kind of reactive communications to inbound things, whether it be phone. In person, in email, what have you. And then the third category is planning and building. And I think of, you know, there's so much more complexity in planning and building and and that's a different category for for that reason. And so, you know, that's that's, I just wanted to kind of surface that that's a dialogue, you know, that that I've been having with Jeremy. And then in addition, it's to me, I just wanted to highlight that it's not just email. You know, it's phone and town center and I know particularly post-COVID, we don't have as much traffic at town center. But I just wanted to share that, you know, from my perspective, it is a priority to get the entry back open. The way it was, the way it was designed. You know, we still haven't opened that post-COVID. And also, one thing that that hadn't occurred to me is that with hybrid work, we don't currently have call forwarding. So when people are working from home, you know, they don't have call forwarding. And so people need to be checking their voicemails and whatnot. And so I voiced to these guys that I think it's a priority to get that. I think my understanding is VOIP is in the pipeline. But just wanted to share that for awareness with the group. So, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, that then brings us to digest. Nope. Is there any public comment on item nine? I see no hands raised. Okay, then that brings us to item ten, adjournment. Thank you very much for coming tonight and we'll see you next time.
Thanks.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.